Good evening. Welcome to Glanorki City Council Open Workshop for the 5th of May 2025. It is my great honour to be here with your elected officials, starting with Alderman Tim Marks, Alderman Peter Rudler, Alderman Justin Stringer, Councilor Molly Kendall, our Deputy Mayor Ross Yackley, myself, Mayor Su Hickey. We have our CEO Tony McMullin, we have Alderman Stevie King and we have Alderman Stuart Slade. We have apologies tonight from Josh Cockshott and Alderman Shane Alderton. So usually at the beginning of any council meeting, we have a brief update of activities that have been going on in council. So I start with, it's been a challenging week for our city. I want to say at the outset that no one wants crime to be occurring in their community. And here at Glanorki Council, we do have a zero tolerance policy for what has been happening. We want a safe community, which is important to all of us. We want a community that is welcoming and where people can go about their business in safety. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the Tasmania Police for their efforts last week in helping keep the community safe, and I think they did a sterling job. Council works very closely with the Glanorki Police and we value this relationship and how it assists in keeping downward pressure on crime. It is important to remember that many of the services council relies on in tackling these issues are the responsibilities of other levels of government. Council does not operate the Tasmania Police Force. We do not operate the Department of Education, nor Children, Young People or the Department of Justice. And we are not funded to provide levels of intervention that some of these issues need. That is not to say that we are not taking issues seriously and doing everything in our power to help deliver solutions. I acknowledge there are range of views around the council table and within the community. However, we need a strategic approach informed by best practice policy to deliver workable and effective solutions with all of these interest groups. I've asked council officers to arrange a workshop for elected members to explore how we as a council can assist in resolving these issues on behalf of the community, not just for now, but in the longer term. Now, our workshop today is an open workshop which we trialled, I think, for the six months of... for about six months before we made it a formal process, where we have invited members of the community, and it's lovely to see so many passionate people come along and join us, to hear about a subject that is of interest to us all, and today's subject is animal management and dog parks. The open workshop programme gives us an opportunity to show the public what we do in a normal workshop format, that is to receive briefings on council business that is usually presented to us for decision making in a council meeting. These sessions provide the opportunity for both elected members and the public to ask questions about the topics that are being discussed. We endeavour to choose subjects that are of interest to the public and I think we've hit on a favourite one today, which is good. And we'll continue to engage with the community to determine what those subjects are. So we do encourage you, if you've got a passion and interest that you think other members of the community would be interested in, we're open to hold open workshops on that. Wherever legally appropriate, we endeavour to be open and transparent in our council meetings. I would now like to introduce Council's Manager for Customer Service, Robbie Shae, to brief us on animal management strategy in dog parks and that he has gentleman with him, including Luke Chu and...
James Don.
James, thank you, James. Please take it away, gentlemen.
Thank you. I'll just share my presentation. All right. Thank you for inviting us to talk about animal management in Glanorki Council. What I'll do is talk through what animal management looks like at council, what functions we do, what functions we undertake in the team, what some of the processes that we do. I've not got that many slides and they're not whiz banks, I apologise for talking... you're just listening to my voice quite a bit, but thankfully we've got Luke with us to break that monotony off. And so Luke will start, Luke will talk a little bit about the dog parks. So as we've, as with a lot of subjects across councils, they touch more than one department. Dog parks is one of them where that sits a bit with animal management with enforcement, but then also being council property and that sits with Luke in the property management role. And I've also asked James Don to come along, he's the Coordinator of Public Compliance. So he's a subject matter expert, so he'll be able to answer questions that I can't. Hopefully that'll break it up. Who in council is responsible? This is probably more for the benefit of the elected members as opposed to the public. But I'm the manager of contact and guidance, I report to Tracy, Director of Community and Corporate Services. In my department, we've got customer service teams, that's front counter, back counter, front counter call centre. We've got the records management team that bring in, receive all the incoming correspondence and task them out to the organisation. And we've got public compliance, which is head up by James, who's the coordinator. In public compliance, we have the Animal Management Unit, Parking Enforcement Unit and the Fire Risk Abatement Unit. So in the animal management team, we have a senior animal management officer who leads the team. We've got three animal management officers who are highly skilled officers in handling of animals, animals' behaviour, animals', those kind of things, and also conducting investigations. So we work with the Dogs Home Tasmania, we work with a lot of the other councils to organise training for animal behaviour, animal behaviours to come and talk to us, handling of animals and then also conducting investigations. A lot of what we do is under legislation, so anything that we, any infringements we issue, any decisions we make could end up in court, so every, all the evidence that we gather has to be audited, so it could end up in court. We also have a dog registration auditor. That's currently a six month contract each year. We haven't had one for a few years, so we've reintroduced it this year. But that dog registration auditor follows up on the registration of dogs, those who haven't renewed their dog registration. They also find new dogs, they identify new dogs in the area that aren't registered and they just generally clean up council's data of registered dogs. We've also got an admin officer as well, he helps with a lot of admin roles and admin tasks throughout the team. And we've also got, you've probably seen the two purpose fit vans for animal management. So that's the big vans with the cages in for, to transport animals around and storage of tools and things like that. Okay, a lot of the stuff that we do is for a reason and that reason's legislative requirements. I've listed a few there, we have many that we deal under, but these are the big ones. The, of course, the Dog Control Act, which a lot of our operations is related to. This establishes the legal requirements for dog management in Tasmania. I'll talk a little bit about it in the next slide. But what comes under from the Dog Control Act stipulates basically how, you know, dog owners are... what dog owners are responsible for and also what council's responsible for as well. And one of those things is a dog management policy, which I'll also talk about in the next slide as well. That's one of the things we must have. So those two kind of are what we work under for dog control. The Local Government Act, of course, we all operate under that. We sometimes use that for abatement notices, but that obviously provides the framework for local government operations. The Cat Management Act, which is relatively new, I suppose, in legislation, that was created to provide for the control and management of cats. So we're talking about, again, responsible ownership, the welfare of the cats, de-sexing, microchipping, the humane handling of cats, and especially if you're catching strays. It lets you know as a resident what you are and aren't allowed to do. The Law of Animals Act is only a small one, but we've put it there because it covers the impounding of animals and the obligation of residents who detain animals. The Animal Welfare Act, obviously to ensure the humane treatment of animals. We don't enforce that ourselves, but we're very mindful of it in our operations and also something that we do educate the community on as well whilst we're performing our tasks. And the Guide Dogs and Hearing Dogs Act is up there too. That recognises a role of assistance dogs, but primarily the guide dogs and hearing dogs. We've actually reflected and expanded on that in our dog management policy and we recognise all assistance dogs as assistance dogs under our policy. And the other big one, as opposed to the Dog Control Act at the bottom there, is the Animal Management Bylaw. So this we've recently reviewed. These, as with all bylaws, they last for 10 years and ours has only just expired and was up for review. It's to ensure the responsible animal ownership and keeping the community safe and not creating nuisances within the municipality ownership. It's now live, it's been in the Government Gazette as of two weeks ago, so it's all live. But we did a lot of work on it and we stripped back the old bylaw, we've made it much more usable. We've consulted a lot of organisations, a lot of the public, and it's been through council a couple of times. We've had a workshop before about it as well, but I'll talk a little bit about that in another slide. A lot of what we do in animal management is dog management. So there's a fair amount of tasks that we do, we perform under that. And it's all governed by the Dog Control Act and also therefore the dog management policy, council's policy. So the requirements under the act is for council to have a dog management policy. There's minimum requirements that include a code relating to the responsible ownership of dogs, fee structure for the registration, dog exercise areas, which is including dog parks, and that it needs to be reviewed every five years. The act also stipulates that dogs must be registered with your local council. We've currently got 6,821 dogs registered this year, which is actually slightly declining, there's a few reasons for that. But yeah, that has been, at one stage, a few years ago, we had about 9,000 dogs in base state. We've got a lot of dogs in our municipality, so a lot of our work goes on managing that.
Robbie, would you be able to expand on why it's gone this far down?
Yeah, yeah, sure. So the dog, or dog ownership has somewhat reduced across the board, we've noticed. We've also noticed internally for council, with... the number of registrations has reduced, partly because we haven't had a dog registration auditor over the years as well. The, we have noticed that there's been a lot of people who aren't renewing their registrations and that's probably reflective of the cost of living as well. So we don't, we haven't had a dog registration. One of the reasons we brought in the dog registration auditor again is because we noticed that that was reducing and we wanted to make sure that we are actually gathering the registrations of dogs that are... that are actually out there and they're just not being renewed. So that's compounding one after year after year. Other reasons? Are there any other prominent reasons that it has reduced?
I think the voluntary registration of dogs is probably due to people not having the money upfront, a little bit less compliance with the requirements of having to register their dog and being able to follow that up actively by having a dog registration auditor is only just come back on the books again by having that position in. So we anticipate that the lower, the lower amount of registrations will increase, possibly, you know, anticipating at least 500 next year and continually to increase as we identify more dogs. With the cost of living and the cost of fees, the cost of fees go up every year by CPI or whatever they are. And if the affordability decreases, then there's always that point where it's... it's not always easy for people to afford to register their dog as once they were able to.
Thanks, James.
With dog registration as well, that also covers a bit of kennel licences as well. That's spoken about in the act. We process the kennel licences. So if you do want to have more than two dogs on your premises, there's a whole process around a kennel licence. And that's where you need to put a permit, put an application together. You name up the dogs that you would like and where it's going to be. You'd have to advertise in the paper and it's quite a big process around that so that anyone in your area can have a, make representation against them.
Does it need an actual physical cage, kennel or something like that? Like if you've got tiny dogs, you had three inch owls, for example, which I haven't, but make up one dog.
No, it's as simple as, yeah, as straightforward as how many dogs you have on your property.
And then you have to have one of those cage things, do you?
No, there's no restrictions on the cage. The cage only comes in if there's a, if you have a declared dangerous dog. The act states that dogs have to be registered over six months old. They've got a registration disc which we hand out and they've got to wear a collar and they've got to be microchipped as well. And that feeds into responsible dog ownership. So we've got a code in our policy that outlines a lot of what makes a good responsible dog owner. But it's generally around ensuring the dog, I might this term, but ensuring the dog is not at large. Makes it sound quite, at least, at least tall, but as long as the dog's not at large, as long as the dog's microchipped, it's registered, it's wearing a collar. And it talks a lot about what, about the dog being under effective control, which is, it talks about whether, if the dog is on lead or off lead, whether you have control of that dog. You can only walk two dogs at a time, the lead can be no longer than two metres long, that company. So it's quite prescriptive. Under the, under the Dog Control Act this year, just for numbers, we've issued 231 infringements. It's not something that we jump to straight away. We prefer to educate and, you know, allow the residents to rectify what they're doing. But yeah, we do, in 231 cases, we've had no other option this year to issue infringements.
So we're talking about the registration and the voluntary registration. A lot of those infringement notices are due to a failure of registering a dog. So that's after a number of attempts to try and encourage the person to come in and register. But the person still hasn't come in to register, so it's, it's... it doesn't make sense in a way that the cost for an infringement notice is one penalty unit for failing to register a dog, which is 202. We're the registration side of that is sometimes less than half of that. So it's, you know, we've tried over the years to really, really promote registering by offering reduced amounts by the due date and then also trying to deter late registrations by having a late registration fee. And also improving our reminders as well by doing SMS reminders and reminder notices and renewal notices. Just so we can sort of try and stimulate that voluntary registration to avoid enforcement action later on.
The act also allows council to declare certain areas as on lead, off lead, restricted, prohibited. So that comes under the dog exercise areas and that's the dog parks as well. But Luke will talk a little bit about that later. But a lot of that, the consultation of that is during the dog management policy. So last time we had the dog management policy, we did a lot of consultation with a lot of the dog groups, dog walker groups, RSPCA, Dogs Home Tasmania. And we also had a group, a working group that came together and throughout that consultation process, we discussed this. And we talked a lot about the exercise areas. We do a lot of work on roaming dogs. We are staffed around quite a bit catching dogs. A lot of them come through the call centre. The resident either have seen a dog loose or have managed to attain a dog. If they can't, if for identification purposes have the tag, the microchip, we try and reunite it with the owner. Unfortunately, we're unable to in some instances and that's therefore the dog will end up with... And that's therefore the dog will end up with the dog's home. And the dogs stay there for a period of time before then moving into, in case the owner comes forward. But then we'll end up in the dog, be removed by the dog's home in the narrow the hall. For numbers as well, with last, so far this financial year, we've had three hundred and forty notifications of roaming dogs. So that's three hundred and forty times when our animal management officers have headed out trying to catch a dog. Successful in over a hundred of those. So seventy-one have been impounded, but they've ended up at the dog's home. And forty-one have been returned, they've been able to be returned without having to go to the dog's home.
Nearly one a day.
It's a lot, it's a lot. We also process barking dog requests. So I'm sure you've all heard of the contentious barking dog that you've had, you've got in, one of your neighbours has got. We deal with a lot of those complaints, so they'll come in through the customer service. Resident notifies of us that they believe a neighbouring dog is barking excessively. We'll ask them to try and attempt to identify which property it comes from. We'll also seek to do that as well. In the first instance, we'll send a letter to say, we've been notified that your dog may be causing excessive noise in the area and can you please hear some ways of reducing that? We'll work with them to do that. We'll allow them to try and rectify it, allow them time to rectify it. And if not, then we ask the complainant to contact us back if it hasn't been rectified. And those move to the next stage, they escalate to a formal notice of complaint, which usually involves us putting a, installing a listening device on the property so that we can take recordings of the noise, the barking. And then we, our animal management officers will review those recordings. And it's a long task, but they'll listen to the recordings and see if there is excessive barking. We've had two hundred and three this year so far barking dog requests, so they've come through. Thankfully, a lot of work gets done there and then. So this year, only seven of those have turned into formal notice of complaints, so we've had to actually sell the recording. Quite successful. Dog attacks as well, we deal a lot with dog attacks. So, and dangerous, therefore dangerous dog declarations. So we conduct investigations whenever we've had a notification of a dog attack on a person or an animal. If it beats the kind of threshold of the attack criteria, it'll move, we'll have to declare the dog as dangerous. Now that means that if the dog is declared dangerous, there are further restrictions in place for that dog and therefore the owner. So that's where you have the, the dog will need to be kept in an enclosure. It will have to have a specific collar to notify everyone that it is a dangerous dog. Sign on the property, has to be muzzled in public, always on lead. Yeah, yeah, register, D S X and the registration is obviously increased because it's more work for our animal management officers to ensure compliance with that. And so far this year, seventy-nine notifications to investigate. So our staff have had to investigate seventy-nine notifications of a dog attack. And we currently have six dangerous dogs in our municipality as well. Why do we allow them? I don't know that we have the, we don't think we have the jurisdiction over being allowed to not allow them. I believe so.
There's scope under the Dog Control Act for a person to keep a dangerous dog as long as they, you know, they comply with the requirements. And obviously, it's not in the community's interest for the person not to keep it. So for example, we want to be able to make sure that that person is going to be a compliant dog owner. So even though they tick all the boxes with all the bells and whistles and the pen and that sort of stuff, you know, we need to take into consideration about how, how responsible that person is in being able to become the owner of a dangerous dog, which, which has been taken into account before. But in more cases than not, you know, with dangerous dog declarations, the majority of dogs declared as dangerous pose very, very little issue after that point. It's often, often in those early stages where they are out and about and not under those conditions do they cause the most drama. And the same with the owner as well, to try and curb the owner's attitude and to try and change their behaviour in being able to control and secure that dog. Unfortunately, sometimes it takes a little bit longer than we'd like. And therefore the dog might get out and cause a serious injury on another animal or a person and therefore we declare it dangerous and horses, horses bolted. Yeah, the horse has already bolted before the gates have been closed, unfortunately.
Yeah, essentially, it's because the act allows for people to own dangerous dogs and it's quite prescriptive on what they, what the requirements are if they do. We kind of don't really have the power to say you're not allowed to.
May I for you, are they in our rural areas or are they in our built-up areas?
Yeah, primarily, I don't think, there might be one, one in Collins Vale, two in Collins Vale. The majority are just round the area, various suburbs.
And linked to dog attacks, we provide an after-hours service for where a dog attack has occurred. So if you call the call centre number, after-hours, it gets through, goes through to a, an after-hours call centre, which is answered. We've got a kind of after-hours contractor call centre called, there's a company called Well Done International. And they deal with a lot of the issues, we've provided them with a lot of the information so that they can fill the calls prior to it eventually getting through to a customer, to an animal management officer. But it's the ones that usually get through all the way to an animal management officer with a dog attack, so after-hours.
Have you ever had any of our staff attacked? You know, when they're going to a dangerous dog situation?
Very rare, yeah, it's very rare. You know, cuts and bites and bruises would be a regular thing, but they're not. I think with the training that they've had and the risk assessments that they do on site to be able to decide how they're going to manage a dog is always been the officer's best friend. You know, to try, I suppose have the benefit of a little bit of time to work out whether it's safe to proceed in securing a dog. And we've got certain tools that we sometimes use and we go in pairs if we need to.
The last one I can think of was a cat. It was a cat and the officer was wearing gloves as well. The cat's kind of gonnied in his hands and torn his hands apart. Yeah, in general, generally, the staff are very well skilled in animal handling. And like James said, they've got the tools, so they've got the catch poles and things like that. So they're generally able to keep a distance if needed. Other animals, and that's, this is where the bylaw comes into play. We use, we use the bylaw for a lot of these. And I've just listed a few of the other animals that we cover. There's cats, livestock, poultry, bees, generally domestic animals, so animals that are owned by people. I have listed pest animals there just because we do talk about that very briefly in the bylaw. But it's, it's generally domestic animals. There is a bit of a grey area when we start talking about ducks and geese and we do get involved in that. But most of that work is done by Department of Natural Resources and Environment. And that's kind of, that's their bread and butter. And we do, because we've got the skilled staff, we do assist with a lot of that as well. And especially with the education around those kind of things as well. The bylaw covers roaming animals, so that's also the control of animals, not dogs, but other animals. For example, this is an example where our bylaw actually covers an area of legislation that is lacking, and that's the Cat Management. Cat Management Act doesn't allow for us to infringe where cats are roaming, but under the bylaw we can. So that's actually one thing that the state government are quite happy with us having in there because we can actually act on roaming cats and we do. Twenty-three this financial year so far. As you can imagine, difficult to identify a cat, cat's owner. But we try our best. Rolling into that is the nuisances, so that it covers all, any nuisances that you can think of that an animal might pose. The number, it talks about the number of animals kept. For example, poultry, how many birds you can have on a certain sized block, how many beehives you can have, the location of the animals kept. So whether it's in a residential area, you can, you can and can't have certain animals without a permit. And location of enclosures. So animal house, under the bylaw, animal house can't be within one metre of the boundary fence, for example. Trying to keep kind of harmony between neighbours, animal owners that are the neighbours. It also talks about maintenance of premises and therefore adequate fencing. So that gives us the power to be able to say, you know, you actually need to maintain that fence so that your animals don't get into the next door because next door's not happy about it. It also covers stable permits. So if you're wanting to have a stable in a residential area, then they can apply to have that established. And I've put pest animals in there, but solely because in the bylaw, we've popped it in there to, so that we can enforce where someone is feeding, harbouring, encouraging pest animals just to assist with the cleanliness. And a lot of that's around the animal enclosures and animal housing that can attract pest animals as well. Now, that's enough. Mainly rodents, yeah. So I'll hand over to Luke to talk about, yeah, yeah, around the dog parks. But if there's any questions around that, while they're on top of your mind, otherwise.
Okay, any questions of Robbie or James? No, we'll come to the audience, we will allow you to ask questions in a minute, if that's okay.
Robbie, I mean, you've mentioned fences that stop animals getting through. Does that override the Fencing Act, which I think since nineteen ninety-eight still says if a sheep can get through it, then you've got to replace the fence, otherwise it's suitable?
Very good question, actually.
Sorry, I think the Boundary Fences Act, as far as we're concerned, if you want to keep an animal, you've got to make sure it's secured. Boundary Fences Act can come into play if your neighbour wanted to change the fence for a particular reason. If I'm thinking about the right piece of legislation, I might not be. But yeah, but as far as ensuring an animal's secured, you just need to do whatever's necessary to keep it on your property, whether that be building inside, an internal barrier between the animal and the fence itself. But the Boundary Fences Act, I think, governs the requirements to deal with your neighbour.
Yeah, who's responsible there?
I don't know if you're stealing that, it's just that people ask me about fences, you know, I checked up on the act and it still referred to the fact that if a sheep can't get through it, then it's an okay fence.
I think it's sheep and chickens, isn't it?
Rabbits. Gone back to rabbits now. Anyway, I'm sure the general manager will sort me out on that one.
A sufficient fence means a fence which is ordinarily capable of resisting the trespass of cattle and sheep, except where such fence is in a city or town or adjacent to a dwelling house. And the expression means a fence of the description and quality agreed or awarded. I'm sure sheep, I'm sure rabbits were in there somewhere, but.
Thank you, councillor Kent.
Thank you, three men, that was really, really interesting. I'm curious about cats and cats roaming. What constitutes roaming cats?
A cat that leaves its own property, as simple as that.
A lot of roaming cats.
An awful lot of roaming cats. And the difficulty is gathering that evidence. So we try and get video footage, photos, that is very obvious what the look, what the cat looks like. That you can then take that to the owner and get them to identify and say, yes, that is my cat. Very, very difficult piece of work.
Yeah, rabbits do get a gunsie. The owners of adjoining lands not divided by sufficient fence or rabbit-proof fence shall be liable to join in or contribute to the erection of a sufficient fence or a rabbit-proof fence, as the case may be.
Is that under the same act?
Sorry, under the Boundary Fences Act. No, no, no.
So that's, I suppose that's talking about the fence between and the responsibility of both owners to make sure that fence is of that standard. If someone is, it does have other animals in, you know, they actually have their own domestic animals in there, then we can kind of go around and evaluate the fence ourselves as well, if they're not maintaining it.
Anyone else have any questions?
No, thank you. Is there any requirements for cats to have bills on their calls? All right, so Luke.
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, just been asked to give a quick talk about dog parks, what we've already got. Could we, should we have more and sort of considerations we should think about if we? So our two dog parks, Collins Vale Dog Park, so the big rectangle on the right hand of that image there is the Collins Vale Dog Park. It's a photo op, a lovely big open area. And our other, our major dog park is Chapel Street Dog Park, just up the road here of Chapel Street in Good Orkney, which is a purpose-built dog park. The Collins Vale's slightly over one hectare, Chapel Street's over two and a half hectares. So both very large, dedicated dog parks. Just for some comparison, City of Hobart has one as well, which luckily for us is right on our border at John Turnbull Oval. So we get to utilise the benefit of that one as well. And Clarence City Council has one at Bell Reef. Other dog exercise areas, we've got an awesome live interactive map, which that link there takes you to, which shows all of our dog exercise areas. Ignore the purple because it's the restricted areas, but those other areas show where you can exercise dogs. We have a hundred and nine dog exercise areas, thirty-five off-lead, seventy-four on-lead dog exercise areas. So we certainly have a very high provision of dog exercise areas, reflective of our high dog ownership. Benefits of dog parks are reasonably obvious, off-lead exercise areas, secure fencing, they're free, they're outdoors, an opportunity for socialisation with people, also with dogs. That does come with some challenges, the dog socialisation part, which I will touch on in the next slide. So whilst they're great places, they do have some challenges that's worth being aware of when considering new dog parks. So they do have a higher risk of dog attacks, fights. So we're talking dogs attacking other dogs, not people here. Dogs are pack animals and they have dominance and ranks in how they behave. So particular dogs can be, I guess, incompatible with other dogs if they want to express that dominance, dominate over a smaller dog perhaps, or just the supervision. Same as we've talked about with playgrounds, the advice from Play Australia is that we minimise fencing playgrounds as much as we can for quite similar reasons in that sometimes people will go into a fence. playgrounds as much as we can for quite similar reasons in that sometimes people will go into a fenced area, plonk their kid in the playground or plonk their dog in the dog park and think that that's it. They're in a secure environment, I can go and sit down, pull my phone out and and leave it there. Obviously, that's not everyone, but it is an issue that 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 can happen. Um, there are health risks, I wouldn't want to overstate the health risk, but because you've got a high density of dogs in the one area, the transmission of sickness between the dogs can can occur a little bit more in dog parks. Um, establishing a new dog park obviously comes with some costs, you've got to have the land, the access, the fencing, the parking and the like. One people probably don't think about too much is um complaints from neighbours. So whilst it's probably generally popular to have a a new dog park surrounding properties, it's not uncommon for those surrounding properties to be not so keen, um complaining about the noise of the dog park or the lack of parking that it that it might bring. Um, and then there's obviously just the the preferences of different people. Some people would prefer to perhaps walk their dog along the Montrose foreshore or um run and go into a fenced dog enclosure. Some people would prefer the fenced dog enclosure. Um, I did ask the guys previously, it hasn't come up strongly in the previous engagement around the dog policy, the desire for more dog parks. It's, uh, sound like what's come up more is around the improvements in the separation, um small dog areas, introductory areas and the like. Um, and there's a few reasons, it's just linked there, which talk about some of the challenges that dog parks have that that people might not be aware of. Um, don't get me wrong, they can be really good things, but it's definitely worth being aware that they do come with some challenges as well. Um, just in summary of that, again, we've got a very high level provision of dog exercise areas, a hundred and nine of them. That clearly has some great benefits. I mean, interesting point there is that our off-leash dog exercise areas can arguably provide those same benefits. Um, fencing is probably the 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 missing link in a lot of those areas. Um, some of our off-leash dog exercise areas do have fencing, some of them are largely fenced or incomplete, some of them are not fenced at all. Um, I guess from an easy win perspective, um completing fencing on some of those off-leash dogs exercise areas would be quite an easy win because they're already known as off-leash dog exercise areas. So fairly minimal impact from some of those other concerns. Um, as we know, they do come with those challenges we we just talked about. Um, and just that last dot point there in terms of other options, I think in the short term, a really obvious one is improvements to the Chapel Street Dog Park, that's a really popular dog park. Um, it gets lots of usage and we do have um some of our, a project set aside actually for the coming financial year to fence off an area near the front of that. We've got quite a lot of space to create a a small dogs area or an introductory dogs area. So someone with a nervous dog or a small dog that, um, they want to engage in the park but need to spend some time there to get their confidence up or or some aggressive dog show up, somewhere where you can take your dog to. Um, so we think that's a really easy win. Uh, the dog policy review is due soon-ish.
It's due. Yeah, it's due twenty twenty-seven, but we're looking to bring that forward a year. So we're hoping to do that next year. So there's a couple of areas that we'd like changed in ourselves.
Sounds like a positive move.
Uh, so obviously if we are going to create some more dog parks, it will need to come with a fair amount of consultation. I think that would be the obvious starting point for that. Um, or or whether it's dog parks or like some other improvements, um help direct us to what the community really wants in terms of dog exercise areas. But yeah, I do think there are some fairly easy wins we could also achieve, you know, fairly immediately, such as the small dogs introductory area at Chapel Street Dog Park. We're having a look at some of our other dog exercise areas that we've already got, which are largely fenced or quickly finished off with fencing to create an area that, um, I mean, effectively a dog park is just an off-leash area that is fully fenced. So there are definitely some of those areas that we could look at as an easy wins as well in the interim.
Thank you. So do we have any questions from elected members? Yes, thank you.
I did a lot of walking and I just noticed that the Montrose Bay, certainly since Covid, it gets a lot of usage, it's really nice to see. But there's two issues there I see that's pretty increased. One is that the people get in the habit of having their dogs, taking the dogs off the leads and then they are around the corner or something, you know, two dogs. And to me, they've got no control, you know what I mean? And then that's an issue and I see it on a daily basis. And the other one which annoys me is the then using the dog to go through on the actual Gasp boardwalks. Well, I mean, we're being rude, the size we've got there isn't that 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 big. And I think it should be a little bit bigger or something because, I mean, there's a number of dogs do that all the time and they do a mess as well. But um the majority of people are really good, but I mean, just things like that just annoy you, that's all. But um is there any thought about making that area a bit more si- I think signage would be good. Is there any thoughts about signage improvement in that beautiful park?
We have, and that the, when we, um, when Gasp was.
Yeah.
When, I can't remember what the exact, um, the Gasp was, um, was Gasp dissolved or? Yeah, it was, but anyway, when, a few years ago, we looked at the signage there and because it was only very small signs there, we have improved the signage around that area. We patrol the area as much as we can with the staff as well. Um, but yeah, we have, we've had quite a lot of discussions on.
Sure.
On on signage, whether we should have the signs, you know, on the floor, by the side of the floor. Because we've, we've, we've put new signs in, um, so there are newer signs there, but we can, we can go back and see how.
Yeah, follow the progress. Thank you.
Thank you, see, I'd like to make my way in.
I went for a run, um, yesterday and down there and, um, I was, what, what someone that just took their dog through the, um, the boardwalk, the first part of the boardwalk from at the deck end or the My State Bank Arena end, um, and then came to the second section, saw the sign and then said, right, I can't do that, and then observed the signage. So when I I did a loop, it came back, I could see that the issue was that there wasn't really a sign at the start of that, there's one over on the side, but, um, so we can probably look at that, that air, opening end of the, um, of the boardwalk.
Oh, uh, Alderman Mark?
I've got a question, there's a lot of dogs being walked out front of council here and I've got questions from members of the public, can we put a dog warding station out front of council? There has previously been one years ago, but it was apparently damaged. And if we could look at putting a dog warding station out front of council, because a lot of public walked in dogs in the streets.
Yeah. I think that would be a bit news for them and social uses, which is what I call the same.
Thank you, Alvarita.
Yeah, uh, that is the Clarence Street one, uh, dog run and also the one at Old Beach. This is a bit of a problem when someone brings two big dogs in with a smaller dog. Is there a way that we can have a smaller area with small dogs? So because some owners are not too keen on putting their dogs, even though some parts of the off-leash, some on-leash, are not too keen on restricting their dog. When you have a pedigree dog, it's worth a few thousand dollars, we're not allowed by a bigger dog. So, um, is the rhetorical for the area up a bit?
We just discussed that.
Yeah, um, that, as I was just saying before, Alvarita, that's, that's one of the easy wins we're, we're planning for next year is that has been the coming financial year, is to fence off a a separate area at the Chapel Street Dog Park for small dogs.
Good.
Or for an introductory dogs for the nervous dogs that are just learning ropes in the dog park.
All right, thanks.
I do have a dog with small dog syndrome, I think she's a big dog sometimes, so I'm certain that always works. David.
Thank you, ma'am. I'd just comment to 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 reinforce, I guess, the, um, you know, that's a lot of dogs in our city. Um, and it's, I mean, I think it's a good thing that we have, um, you know, a large centralised one. I think, you know, potentially having, looking at those off-leash areas would be really, really a smart way of doing it, you know, because you might be in Granton or Clamont and then having that access to, you know, virtually put your dog in a car and take them somewhere, um, might not be possible. So having those sort of regional sort of levels, doesn't have to be, you know, all the bells and whistles, but um some of that, I think that's, that's exciting to um to consider that that's been looked at. So, um, pleased with, pleased with that. Um, I'm looking forward to the review next year, next year, next year, twenty-six, yeah. Yeah, yeah, so it'll be good.
Um, does anyone else have a question? No? Okay, then I'm going to ask our three wise men to come over to this side. So anyone from the public who'd like to ask a question can come forward. You might have to, you might have to ring a chair with you.
Shouldn't that have been a great day?
So?
That was a great day.
Three wise men?
Two cheers, yeah.
No, no, they, they can have a spare chair. Yes. Okay, does anyone want to take their computer?
Yeah.
Have places, thank you. I don't know whether my maths is right, but that's every seventh person has a dog.
Four. Maybe three people have a lot of dogs.
All right, okay, would you like to come to the table or do you want to ask a question where you are? Yes.
Um.
You'll have to shout.
Right, okay. Yeah, it's a bizarre, sometimes you're behind people. Um, let's start really, uh, just introduce myself, my name's Philip Eldridge, the wife in that. Um, I, I've not been conditioned now to walk dogs, you know, coming on ninety. I was on the committee of the Hobart Dog and Associations for fifteen years. Um, and and I've been through three dog management plan, uh, debates and, and things to do with drafting. Uh, we have a letter from Sue, which is very comprehensive, written to us on the twelfth of, uh, October last year. Um, and I'm aware that I might walk pretty regularly at 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 Berdell. Uh, there's, there's an issue there, uh, about the Berdell foreshore. When the caravans, when the caravan park finished, people were walking their dogs there. Uh, and one day they were confronted with a whole lot of dog, um, no dog signs. Um, we'll come to the right ones later in a minute, but I was a bit amused about that, actually. Um, Sue says that, you know, that quite rightly, that this issue of dog signage was identified in in the dog management plan discussion in two thousand and twenty-two. Um, because our association wrote, ask the council to do a complete review of the facilities at all, all dog parks, uh, bags, bins, waters, water, seed, um, and also signage. Because there was a side up in, um, put up there in, in two thousand and nine, that, that plan opened up a park in in, um, Lutara as no dogs. But you go there and you find, you found a no dogs side. And I was sort of asking for about fifteen years for the removal of that, for correction of that side. Um, and and then you suddenly got onto the signage and you dealt with that problem, but, you know, I was hoisted with my own petard when you, when you came up with this no dogs thing. Now, what you can say, this is, this is important in that letter. Um, because people were very distressed about not being able to walk in that area. Um, and we understand that the, there was a contract with Mola about the, who were the drivers to park here. But we understood that when it ended, um, you offered the possibility that this would be reviewed, the possibility would be reviewed, um, with a public consultation. Um, so I suppose my question is, um, how are you going with that? Um, when is, when is it going to happen? My general question is that, you know, we, we actually need, need more seats around the dog park. You might think, why aren't there any seats we should be walking? Well, a lot of long people are walking, they'd like to sit down and partner or socialising and so on. And Chapel Street is wonderful, except you would rather put in new seats and then something didn't happen. Uh, and the main, the main seat is, well, there's a couple of old ones from the beginning, but people really had to congregate by the entrance, which is, uh, full of, um, yeah, wood, wood and salt and, and, and what they don't eat, salt, food and water, right by the gate.
I think we hear you, Mr Eldridge.
That's, I don't, we've got to leave with one question.
Well, thank you very much, we do need this feedback and I think our gentleman from Animal Management will take that on board. I do agree with you, seating's always important, um, for older residents. And we'll deal with the signage and the other questions you raised, was there anything there that's not possible?
I'll just, I'll just add in there, three men, sorry, and the, the consultation will happen through the doc, uh, dog management policy. So, um, at the moment, uh, that, and that area of land has always been prohibited and that's partly because of its previous use and it hasn't changed it through each consultation.
So not for two years.
Sorry.
Not for two years.
The review?
It was, the review will start, um, next year, well, next financial year will start that. So, um, through that consultation, we'll look at that. At the moment, we're not, we're not enforcing that area as a prohibited area. And so we're continuing to, that's why we had the sign removed, um, so that people can still use the.
Well, I do ask the council to have a review of the facilities in, uh, in, in, in all the dog parks. I mean, some of them are completely bare, I mean, there's one of, uh. The Loos, halfway to the Loos, there's a park, a heart of a school, but it's sort of like, like the, the landscape of the loo, you know, the loo, it's completely bare, windy, windswept, um, and no seats at all.
Well, I think we're.
Mariga, 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 is that okay?
Can we look at seats as a bit of a priority?
Take it.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you, Miss Eldridge, and we're glad that you do get your dogs exercised. Thank you. Sorry, would you like to come forward? And we do have to ask, um, people in council meetings to give their name and suburb, that's all.
Uh, Roz Peterson.
Yes, hello Roz.
I want to go back to the cats. Um, last March, I caught six cats in my backyard, trapped them. Um, and I, I rang up, what they called Nine Lives and they went, but this was before I caught them. They weren't very helpful and, uh, they were sort of like, wanted to charge me a fortune to, for a trap and to hand the cats in. Hang on a sec. And so then the next step, I rang the council to see if they could help and basically said, nah, it's not our jurisdiction and, um, that's it. I mean, it started with me finding three little kittens in my front yard. And when I went out to look at them, they ran through a hole in my fence and disappeared. So in the end, I put it out on Facebook, can anyone help? And it just so happened that a friend of mine was, um, um, able to help. She kind of had contacts in in cat land. And, uh, so, yeah, we caught six cats in a week, you know, one every night. And, um, and they were all feral, one was pregnant. And I've tried to do stuff about cats in my, my, uh, street because there were a lot of cats roaming around. Um, and I'm putting, putting leaflets in everyone's letterbox and ask them to keep their cats inside, but it just, it just doesn't seem like, I mean, all the focus seems to be on dogs and cats are out there wreaking havoc on our wildlife and, and, uh, apparently they roam about two kilometres every night, the ones that are allowed to roam, and causing all sorts of trouble and no one seems to, I rang, uh, someone suggested I ring uh, some environmental thing, state government thing, I think it was, and they never got back to me. So, you know, what's? So, you know, what's, I, I think we really need to give this more focus.
That's a big issue. I remember days being devoted to it in State Parliament and I don't think there was any real resolution. Can I just ask the officers if you've got an advice or opinion or where it belongs?
Um, yeah, and it's an area that a few councils are having issues with and, and starting to have those discussions because the, the legislation is relatively new. The state government have, they've, over the years, over the recent, over recent years have put together a team to create a cat management plan that supports the legislation as well. And a lot of that, though, when it, with council, when council is involved, is the own, is where cats are owned. So the feral cats are still kind of staying with the state government. It's that, um, kind of tug of war, I suppose, between council and, and state government.
I mean, I didn't know they were feral until I caught them and took them to.
Yeah, yeah.
Cat Haven.
Yeah, and I suppose the, the legislation was brought in to give the resident the, the power to be able to catch the cat. So it, I guess, it's a very, it's a big piece of work that if we, if council wanted to need, decided to get involved in that, then we would need to have, it's a very, it's a much bigger discussion of, you know, what policies we could put in place. And therefore resources, we'd have to resource the, the whole, the unit, those kind of things. So it's, I suppose it's a, it's a long discussion of firstly whether council wants to step into that space. How much it will cost, those kind of things.
Someone needs to step in.
Yes, we, here, so I've got to juggle a few things. I've got Orman Marks, councillor Kendall and Seo, or is yours legislative response?
Uh, might just have mentioned that, um, the, uh, the council does make a contribution to Nine Lives.
Yeah.
One each contribution, so the councils are increasingly, um, providing support to Nine Lives as an organisation.
They, they wanted fifty dollars to hire a trap for five, five days. And then for every cat that I've brought in, it's going to cost me fifty dollars. And I'm sort of thinking, they've got opt shops all over, they've, they've, they've got money. And I think, oh, it's really expensive to kill them. But none of those cats were killed, actually.
Thank you, Miss Pearson. Um, could I ask all of them, Mark?
Yes, I have a friend, her name's Shelley Robson, she runs Cat Rescue, Granton Feline Cat Rescue, look her up on Facebook. She catches, she has cat traps, she catches the cats and takes the cats away for free.
Oh, okay.
There you go, it's a new friendship for you. Now I'm going to have to start rushing this up because we've literally got ten minutes, so councillor Kendall?
Thank you, three ma'am. I was just wondering whether any councils, because I'm thinking if we require people to register their cats, that would provide funds to, um, regulate them. So are, are there any councils that are leading with that, that have a really visionary approach?
In, in Tasmania, I think Clarence has started this discussion. I don't know if anyone else in Tasmania, I think South Australia do.
Yeah, I think there's some, some interstate, but not within Tasmania, no, no.
And I'm just wondering why dogs have to be registered and cats don't. It's another one.
I think it's the discussion we could take up over into the future.
Yeah, and, and just to add into that, it's mostly because it's in legislation. So because it's legislated, the dogs have to be registered in the Dog Control Act. Whereas the Cat Management Act, it's not legislated.
So it'd be good to lobby your state government members.
Okay.
Right, who else would like to make a comment? Thank you.
Hi, my name's Katrina Ward, I live in Duner. Um, Hobart City Council are having a few issues, I guess, with regard to sharing sports grounds with dogs. I'm not sure what the situation is in Glenorkie, whether dogs are allowed access off-lead on sports grounds when sport is not being played.
Uh, there won't be a few, but I don't think there's many, is there? It's usually in our reserves, but not the sports grounds.
Yeah, thinking, probably not even Conesville because you've got the dog park. I don't know, but we have any, do we?
So there's, um, there's, the, the areas that council declares as prohibited or restricted um, through our dog management policy, there's also prohibited public areas as well. Um, but ordinarily, council prevent dogs' access to services where sport is played.
Even when sport is not being played, they're still prohibited?
Uh, yes, I believe so. I'm struggling to think of one.
Yeah, and we, we do have one, I can't remember the area, but there's the area around it. The oval itself is, is the whole property because it's boundary, yeah.
Caverns?
Um, so that's one thing that we actually want to look at in the review of the dog management policy. Because there are areas where an oval itself, for example, um, may, could be restricted. But there's a lot of land around it that you can walk your dog around and that should be okay. So, yeah, that's one area we want to, um, discuss in the consultation.
Con, Conesville's in Scotland, says no dogs allowed. Oval, Conesville.
Yeah, yeah, they're, yeah, a lot of the.
The oval's sort of a little bit.
Yeah.
You're like a Darts Street issue, I guess.
Yes, I am, yeah, absolutely. But I have a, you know, challenge in that there is no new spaces that they can open up and make available to dogs. Um, with reference to that, one of the Darts Street complaints is that dogs pose a risk to humans. Just wondering, um, with regard to your seventy-nine dog attacks reported. When you say this year, do you mean from the start of twenty twenty-five?
No, financially, yeah.
Twenty twenty-two, yeah, thank you. And do you break down, um, where the location of those attacks occur if they're directed towards humans?
Um, we, yeah, that's all logged, yeah, it's, we're able to pull that data out.
And off the top of your head, you don't know if the majority of those attacks tend to occur?
Um, not exactly.
Whether they be on the street or at a private residence or?
I believe they'd be all while the dog was at large.
Yep.
Primarily against where the dog, the attacking dog was off its own property.
Yep.
That'd be at least eighty percent of the times that it did occur.
Yep.
And mostly against other animals, like other dogs. Like if a dog is a bit dog aggressive or defensive of the turf, they'll probably act aggressively towards another dog.
Yep.
And to a lesser percentage against people.
Yep.
Aggressive towards people.
Good. And when it is towards children, towards people, do children feature more prevalently than adults?
No, 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 a lot less, less, less than what adults would.
Great, thank you. Um, and one final one, sorry, I know, short on time. Um, hoarding, what's the, do you have a lot of hoarders in Glenorkie, animal hoarders? Do you, does it fall under your?
The R S P C A usually deals with a lot of, um, situations because it's, it's, the welfare of the animals is usually at play. Where there's unsuitable living conditions for those animals.
Sure.
Um, we may come, come across a couple here or there, but we're not actively involved with them. If we are, it's off for a very long time, but not for a very long time, it's usually passed over to the R S P C A, but nothing, nothing recently.
Good.
Potentially one in the last year.
Okay.
Thank you very much, thank you. Yes, please, would you like to come forward?
I'm Dela O'Brien, Hobart Dog Walk Association and Friends in the Park. And we were on with Phil, we were on the working group of the last consultation plan. And just wanted to acknowledge that the council has a really good reputation in, in this consultation of the dog management plan. I'm wondering if that's going to be the same this year, if it's going to be similar, similar exercise.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, good.
Yeah, we'll have the working group again and get everyone together.
Great, okay, thank you.
Can I have a quick one, please?
Yes.
I'm, I'm Ina Eldridge, I'm speaking on behalf of eleven dog walkers that walk the dogs at the Beredale foreshore.
Yes.
I just want to know that the foreshore still belongs to you because of this contentious battle we have with Mona staff.
There you go. We get an answer?
Because they say they own the rest, no fishing, in fact.
Hmm, I didn't know about that. Do we have any?
I can, I can probably answer that one. So it is, well, depending on the exact area of land you're talking about, I'm guessing you're talking about the point and the old caravan park area?
Yes.
So that is still owned by council. The grey area that probably exists at the moment is, obviously it used to be a caravan park, so dogs were prohibited in that area. Um, there, there's no caravan park there anymore, but council did go out for expression of interest, looking for someone that would like to operate a caravan park there. Uh, Mona won that process and received a development, um, permit to develop a caravan park there. But it's, was held up by a condition around the odor and the sewage treatment plant next door. Upgrades need to happen to that sewage treatment plant in order for them to be able to activate their permit. Now, that's obviously been going on for a number of years. So it's, it's sat in this grey zone where it, it is prohibited, but as Robbie said, we don't enforce it because realistically, there's no real reason not to allow dogs to walk through there, other than the fact that there is a planning permit and a desire that that be turned back into a caravan park. The, the legislation requires that to be through the dog management policy to identify it as a dog exercise area, if we are to make it a dog exercise area. So that may happen through this coming consultation that's going to kick off in the near financial year. But I guess I just put the proviso behind it that it may then go back to being a caravan park, in which time that would potentially change again. Mona do currently, um, lease just the car parking area, not that whole caravan park area, just the, the old car park of the caravan, the rectangle. That's right, so they have a, a current, so maybe a two-year agreement to, to do that.
Yeah.
But that's not the caravan park site.
Yeah, 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 I was told like that, you can't even fish there, okay? I'm, I'm not see, half of the people that I work with, they came from retirement homes, very elderly.
Yes.
And we want, we couldn't go to the dog park because it's lumpy, okay? But the foreshore is firm, as long as you don't drop your foot in the rabbit burrows, or whatever you call it. Yeah.
And what about the fishing?
What about the fishing, yes?
I don't know.
I'm supposed to represent three of them also. What about the fishing?
Yeah, I mean, if you're talking about the same area, there's no restriction that you couldn't fish there, other than the usual size limits and all the rest of it.
Okay, a, another one, two boys asked me whether they can catch rabbits there.
Um, no.
They brought ferrets and.
Yeah.
And they're delicious, you know?
Um, the, 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 the rabbit population's been quite excessive of late, partly because of the, uh, calicy virus shortage. Uh, that has just come back into supply. So there has been released of calicy virus just recently, but there's been a two-year period where it hasn't been. So the rabbit population has exploded somewhat. Ferighting, feriting did occur there a number of years ago, unfortunate result in a whole lot of complaints, um, back to council. Partly because it is used as an area for, for recreation and, um, it can be a bit of a brutal sight for, for, for walkers to, to, to witness. Um, not to say it doesn't have its place, but I think at the moment, the main avenue of, um, attack on them really is the release of the calicy virus, which, as I said, has had a couple of years hiatus, should see a pick up again. Unfortunately, that can also be a little bit confronting because of the dead rabbits that are lying around. But the advice is to leave them if they are, because that helps spread the, the calicy virus around to have it more effective as well, but.
Okay. Okay, I'm really running out of time, so who else wanted to speak? Thank you. Would you like to come forward?
Thank you. I'll be very quick. I have a small and specific issue.
Name and suburb, please.
I'm Sandra Harden, I live at Whitestone Point, Austensbury. Uh, there is a council park reserve, I don't know what to call it, there's nothing in it. Um, I'm talking about the area between the railway line and the water. It's a big grassed area, um, and has a concrete slab in it, that's it. Um, I've been trying for over two years to get a rubbish bin in that park, preferably one that has a dog poo attachment to it. A lot of people, um, walk their dogs on the walking track around there because it's very nice along the water. Uh, a lot of people come from Granton and various other parts of the council area. Um, and so inevitably, there's, you know, potentially at times a problem with dog poo bags. So either people leave their dog poo on the walking track or nearby, or they leave their dog poo bag that they brought with them sitting there on the, on the track, um, or nearby. Uh, I did contact the council when I first moved there by email, got no response. I spoke to the former mayor when she was doing a shopping, um, centre, uh, activity and she kind of got someone to ring me who said basically, look, we don't have bins sitting around in a warehouse, you know? I would have thought you might have had a spare bin. She said that, uh, you had some ordered and that would take six months to have a bin made. And I can't, I patiently waited six months, came in to see somebody here and was told that I should never have been told that, that that wasn't correct. Uh, didn't hear anything, waited a few more months, phoned up. Very helpful woman on the phone who tried to help me. She told me that in the council admin, one area deals with ordinary rubbish bins that pass and another section deals with rubbish bins that have dog poo bags. Uh, and again, nothing. Everyone pays their rates down there, it's rubbish, it's like a rubbish bin, for goodness sake. Um, I would like a rubbish bin in that little sort of park thing. Um, and I don't understand why it's such a big problem. So can we have a bin?
Well, we, we, we could certainly have a look at it. I'm not sure where the original advice came from, but one of the, I guess the position council has is we try to, we, we've moved away from providing rubbish bins all through residential areas. Where we provide rubbish bins is your CBD areas, your high-use reserves and parks where there's a lot of usage. And it's, it's not, it's not the cost of the rubbish bin, it's the ongoing provision of a rubbish service and a collection service. Uh, these days we've moved much more into a, a situation where people effectively responsible for your own rubbish, you know, if you've got, if you've got, if you've got your, your, your can, you take it home. Um, and whilst dog bins, it seems like, well, at least put a dog bin there. Comes with the same challenges around the collection of them, but the other issue is if you don't provide both, your dog bin just ends up being used as a rubbish bin.
Sure.
So then it gets contaminated with general waste and we can't compost it and the rest of it. So you're really talking about the provision of, of both generally, not just one. Which then creates that flow-on impact of, well, yes, it is just a rubbish bin and a dog bin and it, and it's, yeah, they come at a few grand cost to, to get and install, but it's the ongoing provision of that needs to be serviced every week and collected.
Sure.
That, that's where the real cost and resistance probably comes from. But having said that, I mean, we're happy to have a, have a look, um, at the area that you've talked about. Um, I'm not sure, if you're talking about the foreshore area, sort of near Gould Lagoon, down that side, along the rail side?
No, I'm talking about the actual Whitestone Point, new development, where the tin can mill was, that area.
Around the outside of the new development, where the traffic is.
Yeah, yeah, just in there.
Uh, look, and that may approve, uh, improve in time, because it's obviously a new development. There's a block of land set aside for a playground and a park on that land currently. That's where we probably, that's probably where we will put the, the, the rubbish service.
Could you do it soon?
We, we, we potentially could, we can definitely have a look at it, because if it's an area which we are probably going to service, so it's, 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 it's a tough threat.
That would be great, I'm happy to meet you there.
There you go, thank you, very valid point. Well, I think that was a very engaging session and very worthwhile having an open council to hear from our very passionate residents. Thank you for your participation. And that is going to draw the open section of our workshop for today to a close. Once again, thank you for coming. Please feel free to, uh, put up any suggestions for future workshops and we'd love to see you come to all of our workshops. So thank you.